Now on to the City of Urbana Council's Committee of the Whole. And would the Clerk please call the Rollins?
Mr. Bowersox?
Here.
Mr. Carrick?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
I'm here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Present.
Mayor Pressing.
Are there any additions to the agenda? I know that we're going to scratch 10 and 11 from our agenda. They still have work to be done, so we're going to postpone that. I've had a request to postpone those from Libby, so I don't know that we have to have a motion, but just to let the council know, we won't be discussing those tonight.
Okay.
Go ahead, Dennis.
It probably will come up anyway under number five, which is Budget Review Presentation. And I just want to add a discussion about fees during that talk.
Okay. Staff report, Bill Gray, has three minutes he'd like to share with us.
I'd like to introduce Fire Steel, Assistant to myself, but more importantly, in this presentation, she's the Secretary and Treasurer of the Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network, and we wanted to give you a brief update of our activities in supporting Southern Illinois.
Let me know if you can't hear me, I'm sorry. This is a very brief PowerPoint presentation, but first off, I wanted to second what the couple just said about what a great place this is to work. In October, the mayor and the council approved the City of Illinois joining the Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network. IPW Man now has 18 members and continues to grow. Our first test was just this last week when the state of Illinois sent out the call to ask the member agencies to respond to the help with the cleanup in Southern Illinois. Excuse me here just a minute while I figure this. So, the City of Urbana quickly had eight responders say, "We would be willing to go down and help the people in Southern Illinois clean up after this devastating storm." So, on Sunday, May 17th, these eight responders packed up, along with five other agencies, to travel down to Marion, Illinois. We had about 20 vehicles and other pieces of equipment that left from the Champaign Public Works Department to head on down to help. There were a total of 26 responders from the City of Urbana, the City of Champaign, the City of McComb, the Village of Wakanda, the Village of Villa Park, and Stevenson County. And they worked 12-hour shifts in a community of Carterville to help remove storm debris. And I tried to take some really good pictures, but as I was riding around with one of our crew members, all I could do was just say, "Oh, my gosh, oh, my gosh." And by the time we went past where it would have been a good picture, there was another area where they had just been totally devastated. But we had equipment, we were loading trucks. Our, well, all these people that participated moved about 7,800 cubic yards of debris. It was about 600 trips to a local disposal area. And then there's pictures of them dumping. They worked from Monday through Thursday, removing debris from right subways along residential streets. And Carterville was a town of about 4,700 people. They were one of several communities from about Carbondale to Marion that were hit with 100 mile an hour winds for about a 15 to 20-minute period. This is the one that damaged some of the dormitories at Southern Illinois University. And it was devastating. This was, we were there two weeks after the storm actually hit, and it was still amazing to see some of the damage. You notice in this particular picture that debris was piled up, it looks like it's as high as that person, but it was at least taller than most mailboxes. And the way that I was able to find our crew when I went down there was I was finding streets that were clear, and when I got to where there was debris, that's usually where our crew members were working. There were trees that were completely uprooted. This next one shows where an uprooted tree actually popped a section of a driveway out. And these were the eight people from the City of Urbana who went down and spent a week in hot temperatures to help the people in Southern Illinois. From our Operations Division, Colby Mackey, Ted Curtin, Jared Atkins, John Collins, and Mike Robards went. And from our Arbor Division, Everett Kilpatrick, Mark Cates, and Brad Drew. And again, thank you for making this opportunity possible for us to help out another community that was completely devastated by just a storm that passed through.
Yeah, good work.
I didn't do much.
Do we have anything else from staff, Mayor?
Yeah, I would like to report that I just got back from a week in Korea at a meeting of the 40 largest cities in the world to talk about climate change. And why was Urbana there? Good question. I got invited by Don Wobles, who's one of the people who shared in the Nobel Peace Prize for working on climate change. So, it was pretty exciting to be there, and I was the only American mayor that was there, although other cities did send staff people. And as a result, I got invited to have dinner at the President of Korea's house, which was really nice. And we have a lot of connections to Korea in Urbana. The Korean government has sent a lot of students to the University of Illinois. And I pointed out that even though Urbana's really small, we've had a big impact, or the people who live here have had a big impact on the rest of the world. Everybody was talking about LEDs. Other people talk about LEDs, Charlie. And how they're implementing all this technology. And so, I was able to say that the inventor of the LED, Nick Kolnyak, lives in Urbana. And we also have historic connections. Laura Farrick's, Mike Farrick's wife, she's got, either her great-grandfather or her grandfather was one of the first missionaries in Korea, and they helped establish a university. And one of her relatives helped establish one of the women's colleges in Seoul. And Mr. Underwood, I believe, who's in the Urban Exchange Club, also has a family. I think his father helped establish a university in Korea. So, it was very fascinating to hear these big cities talk about what kind of things that they're doing. I met and talked with the mayors of Sydney, Australia, Copenhagen, Denmark. I talked with the deputy mayors in Stockholm and Tokyo. And it was really good to hear what everyone had to say. And I think this group is going to be pushing for the meeting in Copenhagen, which is going to update the Kyoto Protocol, that cities be given the resources to deal with this problem. Because although the major cities in the world take up only 2% of the land area of the planet, they, most of the pollution is generated in these urban areas. So, that's really where the action has to be taken. And this was, I was the guest of the city of Seoul. Didn't come out of our budget.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, moving on to approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, this would be April 11, 2009.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion by Dennis, second, by Robert. Any discussion, any corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Do we have any public input? Those actually were for the hearing, and so I passed them on to.
Oh, okay.
Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. First, we have the police for the Budget Review Presentations.
Good evening. No PowerPoint tonight, so we'll try to keep it fairly short. For those of you who have been on the council a while, and those of you who are new, I think you've noticed the police budget is divided into four main portions. The administration portion, which the Assistant Chief, Pat Conley, and I are in charge of. The patrol division, Lieutenant Anthony Cobb is here. The investigations division, Lieutenant Bryant Seraphin. And the services division with Lieutenant Kent Jepson. If I get stuck on any questions tonight, they're here to help bail me out. In keeping with the mayor's instruction, as well as Ron Eldridge's predictions of the economic condition and future of the city, the police budget is a very, very similar to last year's. There's no new programs, there are no new personnel. We looked line item by line item to see where we had to have an increase and where we could sustain the levels of last year. Personnel costs, which include salaries, pension obligations, and insurance costs, make up the overwhelming largest increase to the police budget. Materials, supplies, contractual services really make up a very small portion of the increase from last year. There are some VERF items, which is the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund, that have been planned for and budgeted to be spent in the coming year. We've been actively pursuing the grants that every city in the country and every department, I think in the city, have been chasing. So far, no success, but we've got our applications in, and we continue to monitor the various new things that are coming out that may be related to police efforts. I think with that, I'll take questions.
Robert Lewis?
Who's the grant writer?
Mainly the Assistant Chief. It really depends on the particular issue. Like the COPS grant that we applied for, I got an email today, an update from the government. There's $1 billion, which sounds like a lot of money, available to police departments across the country. There was eight, over $8 billion worth of requests for 39,000 officers across the country. So, they're going to figure out through some formula how to divvy up that. But there's other grants, like vest grants, justice assistant grants, that we've got, had some success with in the past. There was a vehicle grant we found out we weren't eligible for. So, pretty much any grant that comes out, we're testing waters on.
Is there, how competitive is it?
Most of them are extremely competitive. The COPS Recovery Grant, much, the grant is available to us, but there seems to be preference to those who have laid off police officers or not in that boat. Many cities across the country and states are, so I suspect they will get preference on that money. Other types of grants, like justice assistant grants, historically, we've been fairly competitive on this particular round, this particular year. There's some glitches in the system. To make a long story short, it doesn't look like we're going to get anything, but there's going to be some future rounds. Vest grants, which offsets some of our expenditures in the budget, we've been very successful on.
Brandon?
Yeah, thank you, guys. I'm happy with the budget, not only in this department, but in many, holding the line but keeping the services that people really appreciate. My one request for sometime this year, and it doesn't even have to be now during budget season, is that sometime, if you guys could come back and do an update on the School Resource Officer and the juvenile sort of programs and interactions that the department has. That's one piece of the department that I think is pretty invisible to those of us on City Council. We don't regularly do an annual report or hear from the School Resource Officer, but it's one area that is important. And I mean, certainly, it's in the budget, and we'll continue it, and you should continue the program. But at some point, I'd like an update on the program and to just hear about the interactions you have with kids and about how the program's going. So, it doesn't have to be now, budget season's very busy. But the School Resource Officer is one area that I'd like us to be a little more engaged with in, you know, in this next year and the next four years.
Tim McNod is our School Resource Officer. Lieutenant Seraphin supervises him. We could have them both come back. Just a short take on that. It's, in my opinion, very successful, overwhelmingly high marks from the school district. The types of things that you can quantify, though, are difficult. The success is hard to measure when you're talking about kids not going into the system.
Right.
But we can put something together.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Dennis?
Yeah, actually, you know, that's a really good point that Brandon brought up. We did have a tour of the schools about four years ago now, I think it was. And we were very interested in the programs that the school has, that the city supports, like the clinic and other kinds of parts of it. And the School Resource Officer, I know that we've had change in personnel during these last four years. And at that time, we expressed the same interest, and we really never have had an update. And for the City Council to have a better understanding of the interactions that go on with youth in the school system, it'd be useful. Now, I don't attend, you know, school board meetings, I don't have a child in the schools right now. So, my resource to hear about this would be a really opportune thing to have as a report from that resource person.
Certainly. Keeping in mind that it will just be our perspective, you know, it could be more encompassing if it were your wish for a school board, and even that school board, school administrators to attend. They could talk about clinics and types of school programs that our School Resource Officer might not necessarily know about, so.
You'd give an appropriate person at least to report to the city since the police are city employs.
Sure.
Any other questions for Mike? Diane?
Well, when you're doing your report on the schools, one of the things we wrote into the rental registration ordinance was the city, was the police department working with landlords, if necessary, to develop security plans for apartment buildings and following up on some of the problems. So, I've been curious if actually you've had to do that and how much time you've had to work.
We have not.
Okay.
We certainly can. You know, that was put in without really a clear vision from me. The city attorney and I have talked about that. Some of the landlords, I suspect it may come to mind for you and I, in the past couple of years, have been problematic in that they're not local, they're in bankruptcy, they're in foreclosure, and figuring out who is actually in charge and to hold accountable has been a bit difficult. But that's certainly an option that we have.
Me, Charlie?
And to extend the School Resource Officer issue a little bit, I know that Danielle was a champion of getting a non-police-type presence, working with the city and the schools, sort of alternative path for some offenders, social worker sort of thing. I think you recall those conversations. I know this is a tight budget, but it's still on my wish list. And, you know, if there's a grant opportunity for something like that or whatever, I'd be interested in following that. And I don't know if you've given it any more thought, or if you've seen anything out there. But I do want to keep that idea out there if at some time we can make it actually become reality.
Thank you very much. Next, we have fire.
I have also with me tonight Division Chief Foster and Division Chief Chisholm. I know you haven't had time to look at this, and I know you'd probably like to look at this at your leisure, but it's just an annual report that we began last year to kind of give you an idea of what we've been doing, and put some charts and graphs in there about some of the statistics in our run categories that when you would like, please feel free to look through that. If you've got any questions, email me or contact me, and I can answer any of those for you. But it's kind of a nice little summary of what we do and what our departments are and some of our accomplishments. We're pretty proud of a lot of things that we've done this year. Chief Beely threatened me, said I could not go any longer than he could, so. I'm just kidding, that's not true. He did not threaten me. But at the request of Mayor Pressing and Mr. Eldridge, I too have attempted to keep my budget at a bare minimum. There are some contractual issues and obviously salaries that are already a part of the budget. But in terms of the day-to-day and the operational things, I've kept it at a bare minimum, understanding the present economic situation. In light of that, I did want to mention a couple of things that I'd like to keep before your thinking. And I know that someday, we're going to see Menards east of town on our east edge, and we're going to see developments, and I know we're going to grow. I feel confident about that. We're a good growing city. So, when those days come, I'll be coming back at it with maybe some other possibilities. But in the meantime, there's two things I'd really like to keep in your thinking for future for the Fire Department. Number one is adding to our Prevention and Education Office, one personnel. I'd asked for that last year, and obviously, we didn't get it, and understandably so. I did not ask for that this year because I wanted to cooperate with the requests the mayor and Mr. Eldridge had made. But it is something that we really struggle with. Division Chief Foster works night and day, and I help him as much as possible. We share duties on fire scenes, and he's available for call as well as I am, and he is really overwhelmed. And I'd really like to get him some help someday when that possibility comes. And if you, when you get time, you'll look through our annual report, and you'll see that unlike most cities, we have a huge effort in the Prevention and Education Division. Our risk watch team, who is headed by Phil Edwards, is known throughout the state. In fact, they're known throughout the country, so to speak. They recently visited Fort Smith, Arkansas, at their expense, Fort Smith's, to come down there and teach them how to do risk watch, and their highly touted puppet show. And if you've never seen it, it is impressive. Phil and a couple of his comrades do an excellent job of that. So, we put a lot of efforts into trying to prevent those situations, those tragedies that occur. And those guys, our guys, go out, as you well know, on Saturdays and knock on doors, check detectors. Huge educational efforts, and it's, I believe it's part of the reason why we haven't had a fatality in over 10 years in this city. I'm extremely proud of that. So, someday, I'm hoping that we can add that and keep that before your thinking. The other thing that I brought to you last year, and Charlie actually helped us on, was to, and so did Bill Dejarnet, to develop some information for you in terms of station locations. As we see the area grow east of town, we're going to need to move a station. And I know right now, economically, we just can't talk about that, but I want to keep that before your thinking and maybe even consider something in the future to get together and decide when we may start planning and even looking down the road. So, when those days come, we're not caught behind the eight ball, so to speak, and not ready to do that. So, those are two areas, again, I'd like to keep in mind. As you well know, we added our captains and engineers position, which was highly publicized, and it was nonadditional positions. It was changing individuals within the department, giving them promotions. And I might say that that has worked extremely well. The captains have freed up our Division Chiefs, which Division Chief Chisholm is one of our shift Division Chiefs. It's freed him and his two partners up on the other shifts to help me out more, which has been a huge help for us. And the captains then have taken some of their duties, which has been great. Having the engineers' responsibility over the apparatus has been another huge development for us, that I appreciate the fact that they're able to spend more time maintaining, checking, being familiar with that apparatus is really good for us, too. So, I appreciate the fact that you guys were willing to do that for us. We also have pursued and actually achieved grants. Both Division Chief Foster and Division Chief Chisholm and Division Chief McDuffie have written grants for us. We approach it a little bit more on a multi-jurisdictional level. You might remember that we received a grant that we instituted last October whereby we were able to replace all of our radios, both mobile and portable, at a fraction of the cost of what it would have cost us if we had to do it ourselves. We also just recently achieved a pager grant to replace all of our pagers for, again, a fraction of the cost of what it would cost us to do that if we had to pay it. Division Chief Chisholm has just recently submitted a grant for the vehicle exhaust extraction systems, which, if you may not be familiar with that, diesel exhaust has been carcinogenic and has been proven to cause cancer in humans. And we discovered even to our chagrin that the computers at some of the stations, Charlie, had soot in them from diesel fuels. And they were causing the computers to operate slowly. So, we really felt like as a safety need, we had to do something about that. So, we have got that in the budget this year under the section for revenue. Help me out with that. General Reserve Fund for revenues. But we applied for that grant, so we're holding off on replacing it until we find out if we get that grant or not. If we get the grant, we'll be able to pay for it by grant money. If we don't, we'll use the money set aside for that and have that replaced this year. I think that's about the overview of what I have for the budget in terms of my input. I guess I just open up to questions now.
Not so much a question, but I think it really was a good opportunity to create the different positions of engineer and captain to enhance the opportunities for the staff. And I had, I just had to say that I opened up to page five of your report. That's my neighbor's car on fire. I remember that day, you guys were there in about two minutes, and he didn't get, and his car got totaled, but okay. His house did not burn down. And I was amazed. Of course, we only live, you know, four blocks away, but I mean, it was a very fast response. So, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I wanted to ask you on the education, prevention education, would it help to have a part-time person?
It probably would be difficult because they're union individuals that would have to follow the contract in terms of hiring somebody for that position. It'd be a staff position.
Okay.
Yeah.
They're not at the supervisory level?
It would be probably a lieutenant's position. That would be below, of course, the Division Chief's supervision level, yeah. I mean, I hate to turn down that, but.
No, I'm just wondering, because sometimes it's easier to, you know, on a budget thing, to sort of slowly build up to what you need instead of doing it all at once.
Yeah, it almost needs to be an additional position.
Okay, thank you.
I was just going to say, I appreciate you talking about, yeah, not only that staff position so we can get more resources in prevention, but also the station location and growth issues. We, even though we're not going to be able to do anything with those in this budget, I know those are high on all of our lists, and we appreciate the proactive planning.
Okay.
And look forward to those conversations about how we position ourselves to be ready to move a station and grow to meet the demand, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, thank you. I guess one of the things that I see being on campus regularly is the joint response of Urbana and Champaign to certain things in the campus area. It always puzzles me when I read about the volunteer fire department in Savoy answering and helping on something that is in northeast Urbana. How does that work, and how come they're not asking us for help?
We've asked that same question. If I can explain this as, as good as, as well as possible, I should say, in that there has been a historic separation between volunteer and paid fire departments. I think we've made some really good strides in those areas. In fact, if I could recall your attention to the major downtown Champaign fire where the. the Metropolitan Building burned, we had every piece of equipment committed that day, both in Champaign and Urbana. Our department was staffed by Carroll Fire Protection District and St. Joseph Fire Protection District, as well as Champaign was staffed by Savoy, Corn Belt, and some other departments. So we think highly of our volunteer forces out among the peripheral areas of the city, and we'll call upon them when we need them, and when we think they're very qualified There seems to be still some resistance to them calling a paid department to a volunteer fire, by and large, and I think some of it is, I guess, a fear of being taken over by a major department, that if they call us, there might be a time when they feel like, well, if you need Urbana, then you may just want to have Urbana as your department. I think there's part of that. But we're willing to go, and if they call us, we'd be there. In fact, there's been times, and I don't say this critically, it's just a fact, where we've watched an engine from Savoy pass by our station to respond to a fire north of town. We would gladly be able to respond and like to respond to that, and have told them that, but there's still some resistance there, and they're good people. I don't mean to, I'm not running anybody down. In fact, Carroll Fire Protection District Chief is a good friend of mine, a fine man, but there's still some barriers there that I think that we're trying to cross. The Mavis 28 has helped that. We've trained together somewhat, and we've begun to break those down a little bit, and my hopes is someday we can completely break that down.
Yeah, I guess to follow up, it's just I'd really like to see us work really closely, because I know how well the Metropolitan Fire concept works.
Yes.
With Champaign, and, you know, the whole point of this is to save property, and most important of all is to save lives.
Yes.
And, you know, frankly, if we can get there faster, they should take advantage of that, and that's what the mutual aid is all about. So whatever you and staff can do to encourage that, I think it's important, and to reassure them that we just simply want to work together and further the public good. So whatever efforts you can do to that, I would suggest looking at places where you have public, private, or public volunteer partnerships, ones that have worked. I think I mentioned one a couple of years ago that I came across at a university that, actually, it's a university has a paid department, but everything around it is volunteer, and they work very closely together. It's back in Maryland or something. So there are some examples of that out there, making that work. I think I can foresee the day where, especially as we develop, where it might actually be to our benefit to work very closely with these, with these neighboring volunteer departments.
Okay. And if I could just add to that for everybody, the relationship with Champaign or about fire departments have increased exponentially over the last 11, 12 years since we've entered into the intergovernmental agreement for the University of Illinois, and we operate together exceptionally well. We train together constantly, we work together constantly, and I'm very pleased with that. And maybe, Charlie, and the rest of council folks, I would like to even maybe consider an advanced development in that area. And as we look at station locations, I think that that's some opportunity that we might be able to look at also, so we may be coming back someday and talking to you about that in addition to what you just mentioned, Charlie. Okay, thank you.
Tonight I want to talk about the operations side of our budget, and then after that, talk about capital improvement plan, which was provided to you a week or so ago. First of all, I'd like to introduce part of the Public Works team here this evening. As mentioned earlier, we, Barb Steele here, Rod Fletcher, Gail Jamison, Rich Coyne. Rich Coyne is the new operations manager, who has been promoted in Jim Kelly's retirement, and Mike Brunk, and Doug Miller, who's just walking in. Doug is our CIP guy. Anyway, to go over some of the highlights for this project, this coming year's budget, I share with you these items. There is one suggested personnel change in the department. We're going to be having one of our full-time electricians retiring soon, and Rich Coyne and looking through his team as to what would be best for doing all the activities and programs there. We're thinking of replacing one of the electricians with a position that isn't quite as costly, but it's a utility locate technician position, and what that person does is essentially respond to all Julie calls, day and night, to locate all city facilities. Right now, that function's performed by any of the three electricians we have, and quite honestly, that's a fairly high-priced individual responding to locate individual city utilities when a lesser-salaried person could do that, and the additional money that would be saved then is suggested to be used for additional seasonal help in the electrical section. Electrical section always has a variety of street lighting projects that go on each year, an extra helping hand would go a long way, so that's really early, I would call, personnel-related change. In the commodities line items, we're seeing, again, continued increases, and that includes such things like assault. We're looking at over a $25,000 increase in the budget there that's suggested. Street lighting supplies are much higher. We had a very nice 10-year contract for replacing light poles that has now been terminated, and we're seeing a big jump from very favorable prices we used to receive, is one example. That's, there's about a $14,000 increase in just street lighting supplies we're suggesting. Nuisance abatement is another contractual-related item that, again, we have to respond by a contractor to abate certain situations. Those costs continue to go up. Asphalt and concrete prices are going up, so you'll see in those particular line items, several thousand-dollar increases. In our motor vehicle parking system fund, we are providing money, $50,000, for a master plan for parking lot lights downtown. We're going to do an inventory, an assessment. One of the things that we learned when we did our parking study was some areas are virtually unlit or poorly lit. We do have a variety of lighting fixtures that are out there and types of lamps, et cetera, and it would be my wish that as a result of this plan, that we would come up with, up over a period of time, a phase-out of the lighting and get in the most highly efficient, you know, well-illuminated lights, meeting the necessary standards for parking light areas. So this would be out of NVPS. A second item that is budgeted is a wayfinding signage program. Again, this parking study had pointed out that we have some poorly identified lots, particularly the deck and other lots. We'd like to couple this study with wayfind signage so that certain significant buildings in our downtown and our surrounding area would be identified, such as a library or a courthouse, or, you know, we would come up with that list, and have a decorative sign or a sign that would meet a certain theme and color scheme to fit throughout this area and could be used in other areas of the city. This budget, there is no money for these particular programs, I think it's important to point out. One is, is that with the acquisition, if you will, of the Tri-Star Building, we felt it's necessary at some point to do a program and space needs analysis of this facility, and perhaps even update the Public Works operation. Public Works is woefully undersized with indoor storage for our equipments, and we really need to plan at some point in the near future for our needs with our fleet maintenance facility and just the lack of storage. A lot of equipment is left outside and has a deteriorating effect on its longevity. Anyway, there is no space and program needs money budgeted in this fiscal year. Number two is we, there was a suggestion to replace the upstairs carpeting. That is not in the budget. Thirdly, there was thoughts of updating security in our public facilities, this building and Public Works and other locations. There is no money in the budget for any security modifications or upgrades. Also, knowing a council goal is to proceed and promote many aspects of sustainability. We had developed a report of kind of existing programs we're doing. We identified some programs we'd like to expand on. There is no additional staff or really resources to address in any meaningful way sustainability. We do have, as portions of, two staff members' responsibilities, support to the Super Sustainability Advisory Commission, but I just want you to realize with the constraints that we're working under, there is no particular staff enhancements or coordinator positions. One thing that I learned today from Rod Fletcher, our environmental manager, is, is that our very popular battery recycling program, where we have battery drop-offs at the library in this building and Public Works and in Purvis and other areas, that interstate battery is no longer making that program available to us at no expense. So something to think about, and we don't need to decide on it tonight, is, is that we estimate that if we use another contractor or provider for that program, it would probably be around about $10,000 a year. We have collected, as I understand, about five tons or 10,000 pounds of batteries since its inception, so it is highly used in the community, but our free resource of reuse of those metal and chemical products is no longer available to us. Something else that we started administratively, that we do not have budgets, budgeted money specifically for next fiscal year, would be a rain barrel rebate program. We're doing that now at $25 per home at Line IFS or at the Farm and Fleet facilities, and we would suggest that, knowing that that, there's a lot of interest already we've seen with residents, and you have to be a resident of Urbana to partake of the $25 rebate, we would suggest perhaps a $3,000 funded from our U-cycle tax to help fund something like that. I won't go into capital improvement projects at this point. I'll stop here and try to answer any questions you may have, or if you have some good help behind me if I can't answer it.
I guess, again, this is another long-term issue. I guess, you know, I have a big concern. We have this nice fancy equipment, and it's exposed to the elements. I know that, you know, Crop Sciences will throw up a big pole barn to put combines and stuff in. I don't, I don't know if there's a temporary solution that's doable on any of the existing property, but I know that we shouldn't be leaving this stuff out.
In 2001, we did have that space needs program and needs study done, and, you know, we pretty much have a real good feel for what amount of, you know, space we need. We just never went to that next step of a master plan. There's a lot of ideas that we have and options that could be pursued, but, but there is a cost, if you will, you know, with that situation, and also just with the efficiency of our mechanics with the facilities and amount of bays that they have, too. So there's storage-related, you know, type needs, too, but this is just some, I mean, we're kind of busting at the seams, too. If you've been upstairs with our engineering staff, we've carved out a few more workspace areas that used to be hallways, so it works, but we're tight, too. So anyway, these are some of the challenges we face. Okay, well, in the capital improvement scenario, I want to go over some of the highlights. This coming year is going to be one of our busiest years, busiest challenges in some time with contractual projects. The big three, big projects, actually four, is Windsor Road Project, which is in the process of contracts being signed and start, work starting soon. The Goodwin Avenue Project, again, is nearing an execution of the contracts, and notice to proceed with that. The Green Street Project, knowing the decision made tonight, we're going to be wrapping up the plans and specifications, and we'll be going out for bids for that project real soon to essentially reconstruct Green Street between Little East of Vine and Cottage Grove. And then North Shore Drive, that money, those plans are out now for bids. We'll be receiving bids soon. We'll basically be rebuilding that street, putting a new public sewer, and later this evening, I want to talk to you about some funding for the sewer lateral services for that project. But looking ahead, there are, we're still waiting to hear on some grants responses, most, particularly the Main Street Project, east of Vine to our east corporate limits. We're waiting to hear on a potential million-dollar grant, which would do a lot of work with resurfacing the streets, ramp accesses at intersections, striping for bike lanes and that sort of thing. In the upcoming fiscal year, there's a lot of interest in our bicycle master plan implementation, and we have above and beyond our $25,000 that we have identified for basic maintenance and striping and replacement of signage, $100,000 of doing the initial signage and striping, and whether it be no parking signs or bike route signs or whatever it might be. There's a lot of streets that have been identified for routes and lanes, and we want to systematically start speaking to those residents. Some of the areas, as I've mentioned before, do involve removal of parking, and there's going to be a lot of, I think, public involvement and meetings to talk to the public about, about some conversions of those streets. Other capital improvement projects to note include the High Crest Road Side Path. That's about a mile and a half, two-mile length of project. It's a great project. We do have a grant for that. We're pretty much compelled to proceed with construction next year because of the grant monies being available. We would have hoped a year or two ago that Menard would be further along. There is a possibility, maybe more of a probability, that a portion of that path may have to be reconstructed with some of the Menard work, only because the grades are going to change so dramatically north of Florida Avenue, but there isn't, but we don't want to lose the grants that we have available to us, so we're going to work as closely as we can with Menard in that situation, but that's one slight risk with that project proceeding. With that, I think I just want to bring to your attention, if you look at the cash flows, especially in the capital improvement replacement fund, the AO9, we call it, and also in the motor fuel tax fund, it doesn't take too many years out in our, in future fiscal years that we do run into the red. So there isn't, there's a lot of projects that we have, we'd like to do. Obviously, we're not going to overspend our budgets, but I just think it's important to realize that revenue sources, wherever they may be, is important to us, and with absence of those revenues, there's some projects that may have to be delayed even further based on, you know, the cash flows we've seen in the future years. And the fact that costs are going up is not helping us either, so I'll stop and ask any questions.
Charlie?
Yeah, Bill, talking about bicycles and the routes and stuff, which I'm, you know, first looking forward to, but having visited other communities and talking to the council members and public, we also need to develop some more educational pieces, and I don't know if there's any, any money or some of the money for signage can be used for educational pieces, but I've got a collection of stuff at home that I plan to present to the Bicycle and Ped Committee meeting in June, from what I've found out, so.
To talk about education, actually, Jennifer and some other people will be working with the League of Illinois Bicyclists, and we're going to be putting a video together here in the coming months on bike education that will run on UP TV and other outlets and be on the website. But this will be fairly short, but we're going to be doing some filming of do's and don'ts, and we agree that that is an important message we need to get out there so that motorists and bicyclists know how to interact with each other while on the street. So there's a person that LIB knows that is willing to come if we just pay the person's So, there's a person that LIB knows that is willing to come if we just pay the person's basic expenses for the day, and we'll work with our UP-TV staff people here and coordinate it, and we're going to do a shoot in not-too-distant future, so we agree.
Well, I was also thinking, I've got, you know, these, these other pieces that have come from like the Bicycle Transportation Alliance in Portland, and there's some stuff from, what was the Chicago Feder- uh, Chicago?
Where did that come from?
Chicago and Bicycle Federation, which now is called Active, Active Transportation something or other, I've forgotten. They've got a new name, but they've got a lot of pieces out there that we can get to the public, and it might not be, you know, I, I know that Chicago line has told us that we can use their stuff, LIB has told us we can use their stuff, so we give them credit. BTA, I think that was the understanding I got with them too, was that they would be able to use some of their stuff again with attribution, but we'd need to pay for, you know, printing it and getting it to people. But there's a lot of material out there. We don't have to reinvent the wheel, but we do have to modify it a little bit to, to fit Urbana.
Glad to see you.
Diane?
I would like to second that comment about education. And this spring, when I was campaigning in my neighborhood, I think I've told you, the confusion about pedestrian and the role of pedestrians and bicyclists and drivers on the stretch of Phila Road between Florida and Colorado came up again and again, in Ward Seven anyway. So, so I hope whatever education efforts you have or you're going to plan would include actually shooting some video on that very stretch of the street and, and helping people understand what the roles of the various drivers, bikers, and pedestrians are. It's very important.
Dennis?
Thanks. I wanted to ask maybe about two different projects that I don't see in the immediate plan, but I guess there are things that we're going to be looking at in the future. One of them is the Race Street Bridge. No, it's not a Race Street, it's, yeah, it is. It's the Race Street Bridge in Ursil Creek. That's part of the Boneyard Plan, and the Boneyard Plan hasn't really been engineered yet, but that bridge is in bad shape. What do you see as replacement goal for that bridge?
Actually, I wanted to talk about that in my presentation, it was oversight, but there's three main projects that we see being funded by TIF I and TIF II, and that is the Race Street Project, which includes the bridge. The second is the Boneyard segment between Griggs and Broadway, and the third is the Broadway Street Scraping Improvements. And if you look in the CIP, we have all three of those listed for X millions of dollars. And it's a little difficult to know exactly the sequencing, but what is budgeted is, we want to go to that next stage of engineering for the Boneyard and get that going. And we think that the Boneyard and the Race Street Bridge project are linked together. They're in the same area, they need to happen pretty much at the same time. So, those monies would be used, whether it's one consultant and one contract, those details need to be worked out because it's kind of a multi-disciplined type of assignment, but we do have money in this coming fiscal year to begin, you know, either with our current consultant, which is WANK, along with some other consultants to assist them in this project and to move forward with that. So, yes, the Race Street Bridge does need to be replaced and upgraded, and we want it to be beautified, if you will, besides just being a bridge, you know, carrying pets and vehicles across the Boneyard, but something in keeping with the theme of what we want to do with the Boneyard. So, from a, there's going to be a lot of initial discussions involving many staff, community development, and Public Works with adjacent property owners, along with the consultants to, then there's a lot of permitting involved since we're dealing with the waterways. So, there's going to be a fair amount of lead time before construction actually happens, but we think, you know, that those are the projects in the downtown that we see happening here with construction, you know, two, three, and four years out.
So, do you think that the engineering plan for the Boneyard will be done for the entire one, although construction may be limited to only a section of it, or do you see that the engineering would be divided into sections of accomplishment?
The Boneyard Creek Master Plan in five, what I would call segments, and the metal segments or Segment Three is this stretch that we're talking about, which straddles either side of Race Street. It would be the final design, engineering plans and specifications for just that segment. It would exclude those going up toward Springfield or to the east going toward, you know, University Avenue.
Thanks. I have one other project that came up, and it's on the very edge of my ward at the north, and that's the, the rise that exists right at the county line between Summer County and on Airport Road. You put out, the Public Works put out a lamp on a pole at the entrance of Landis Farm Subdivision about a year and a half ago, and that was a safety measure. There was an accident, there was a fatality actually, if a person was walking in that area. And I know that in the Traffic Commission, we've talked about the safety aspect of that highway, and Summer County is willing to cooperate with us to do something about it, but we're talking really about kind of reconstructing a part of that highway or that street to level out the rise. So, it's, there's kind of a construction excavation aspect to the plan and not just resurfacing it or remarking it. A couple of years ago, after that accident, we did get the stripe down the center line of the streets that at least the traffic could stay on the appropriate side, and that was an improvement. But I'm, I'm wondering what, what the, you know, it's, it's on the perimeter of the city, but it's a, it's sort of a dangerous area, and I know that it was sort of dependent upon community growth and the number of homes in that area. Well, we're seeing more infill up there, and I'm just wondering what you see as the future for that project? Is that on your radar at all?
It's my knowledge, it's not. Let me look behind me and check.
Okay. The answer's no.
No.
I, I wish that it would be put on our radar. You know, it's not, it's a safety concern, it's not just a maintenance concern, and, you know, we'd have to work with the township on that, but we have had a fatality out there in the last two years, and cars do go fast on the highway. So, I, I hope that we would consider the reengineering of that rise and to remove it, to level it out, so that there would be as good sightlines as you come out of a Landis Farm subdivision.
Anything else for Bill? Brandon?
Yeah, I wanted to ask about briefly the Boneyard and Broadway and Race Street piece, and thank you for, I had a bunch of email questions, and you guys got back to me with very timely answers. I appreciate all of that. I guess the one lingering thought that I'm left with is that in the order of those projects, to me, the priority is the Boneyard and the Race Street portion over the Broadway portion. It just, my lingering feeling is that there are so many projects connected to the Boneyard piece that are timely. The Flatiron, the Denny's, now the school district's willingness, I think, in their new plan to maybe move adult ed to other places and things that could really open up that piece, the Strong Banquet Center. There's just so much synergy there, and I think we're farther off in terms of how many years before there's that kind of redevelopment on the Broadway side. So, if you have to pick and choose between things before the TIF expires, the Boneyard would be the thing that I feel is the most transformational to downtown. That said, I wanted to clarify and make sure I'm clear. In the current plan, before, before TIFs I and II expire, is it just that middle segment of the Boneyard piece that, that with current cost estimates, we can afford to accomplish, or is it more than one segment, or is it all five segments that we're hoping to get done before the TIFs are possibly expiring?
The TIF will, will and can generate more money to do the other segments, but the delicate balance is, is what sorts of redevelopment opportunities might we be faced with in the coming years? Because there's a certain pot of money, and it's many millions of dollars, but I think that's going to be a key. We can proceed, we may have to bond for doing rest of the Boneyard work sooner versus later with future TIF dollars coming in, but I want to be careful, and I know my friends on this side of the room, you know, have their interests too with respect to just those projects you mentioned, because there will probably need to be some TIF-related help in, in doing some redevelopment-type projects. So, so there's a certain pot of so many millions of dollars available, and right now, you know, we're identifying a good seven or so million dollars, eight million dollars with Boneyard Race, Broadway-related work. It'll take several more million dollars to do the balance, although the most ambitious, most expensive portion, I think, of the Boneyard is what we're tackling now, but it'll be the biggest, I think, wow factor. It's good visibility and whatnot for the area, so I think it's a, it's a good choice to start there first. So, I think it all can be done, and I don't want to diminish that despite all these other projects going on in Public Works and with Community Development, that this is going to be yeoman's task to coordinate these projects too, and it's going to take, take a lot of careful effort, so.
Yeah, definitely. And about the TIF expiration, at what point do we begin to talk with our legislators and others about, about bills to extend our, our TIFs? I don't know how much lead time we need to have or when it's appropriate to start those conversations and even talk with the taxing districts to decide whether they want to participate with us in TIF extension.
I think that's part of the answer you just said, and that's an extremely important component, is our taxing body partners.
Okay.
So, I, I don't know if Livy wants to comment on that when she makes her presentation, but the TIF provides us the money, we spend it, but that's a question I'll defer to Community Development, so.
Great, thank you.
Anything, Mayor?
I just want to thank you for the school signs. That was a grant, but those are really good signs. Very easy to see.
This Friday, we have a unveiling, if you will, of the Safe Route to School grant money, $85,000 we received, and Congressman Johnson is going to be there, or his staff will be there with a little ribbon-cutting, if you will, opportunity. So, yeah, the, all the school zones are updated signage, it all meets the MBU TCD, and they should be lasting a long, long time for us, so it's, it's great to see. And the police are providing us some positive impacts on the speed zone, and I think even myself driving, you have that thing flashing at 22 miles an hour whenever you've got to slow down, so, you know, it's, it's good. I think it's, increases the awareness with the colors and with the speed limits on the arterial collector streets, we have that on.
Anything else for Bill or Bill's staff?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Please.
Last but not least, we have Livy from Community Development.
You see, we coordinated tonight on no PowerPoint, so I think most of you know, in Community Development, we do a lot of different things. I like to call us kind of the catch-all department, if you will, and we have four different divisions. First is Building Safety Division with Gordon Skinner, the division manager. Planning Division with Robert Myers and Rebecca Byrd is here tonight from planning. Economic Development with Tom Carino, and Tom and Anna Hawk Holter are here tonight. Grants Management with John Schneider, he's here, as well as Kelly Hartford. So, we do a lot of reporting, we generate a lot of paper, a lot of council items, do a lot of annual reports. This is the annual report for grants. I think this just got completed recently. That's our annual action plan. We also have other reporting requirements by HUD. Building Safety Division does a great annual report, and I'm working on getting this on the website, something we've done, they've done for the last five years, and they just do a lot of analysis on building activity, so this will be something that you'll be able to look up hopefully later this week. And if you want your own copy, I'm happy to make that as well. And each of our boards and commissions that we serve also issues an annual report. So, if you look up Plan Commission, for example, you'll see their annual report and the cases that they handled, and for the state, we do an annual report for historic preservation. Zoning Board also does their own annual report, so that's all available on the website. As with the other departments, obviously, we held the line on the budget this year. There's some tweaking though that might not be apparent unless you study it. We've been very smart, I think, at parlaying different positions and also making good and wise use of city funds. Community Development has just about 25 staff, and we have become very stable in recent years. Very pleased with that. We've had a lot more staff stability, and we've been able to take talented people who've started with the department, perhaps even as interns, and move them into full-time positions. So, even just recently, again, being creative with our funds, we were able to move Rebecca Byrd, start out as intern and then a, you know, part-time position, and now is a full-time planner position who's able to specialize in historic preservation and design review, which are two needs that we certainly have had more demand for. Anna Hawk Holter, another example, somebody started out on a part-time basis and is now full-time, and that is for our public arts program, other economic development programs, and also works with Rod Fletcher on our Sustainability Commission. So, a lot of diversity there, and these are in this budget as full-time positions. So, we're very thankful for the ability to work with these people. We again have interns as well helping us, and always have a great source of interns from our local universities. In the Grants Management area, we have in recent years lost a position, and this was from each year that federal grant allocation was declining. And finally, this year, we believe hopefully that trend will be reversing with the stimulus funds that you talked about earlier tonight. Kelly Hartford, who's here tonight, has actually been taking on two positions for the last three years or so, our transitional, used to be our Transitional Housing Coordinator, and also administering our CDPG and our Supportive Housing Programs. So, if anything, we'll be looking for hopefully increased allocations from HUD and hopefully get some relief there. I know that's something John is studying very hard, and one thing we've been able to do is to introduce an intern who's working full-time with the department this summer and helping on some of the reporting requirements for HUD, and that's Jen Gonzalez. So, along with this good news is, you know, stability of the staff, is I believe we're getting more professional staff, and part of this is seeking and encouraging more professional certification and training opportunities. So, just to give you some examples, this is something I'm very excited about. We now have five AICP, that's American Institute of Certified Planners, five AICP at the city. That's incredible for the size of community we are. Ryan Bro just passed his exam, and Jeff Engstrom as well. So, that's great, and that comes with a training obligation as well. Lisa Karcher and Steve Cochran, I think I announced at our last meeting, attained their LEED AP, that's Leadership and Energy and Environmental Design, I'm not sure, but it's accredited professionals to work on sustainability. In Building Safety, our professionals are all certified by the International Code Council. And what we're doing, everybody has their basic certifications, we're now working into cross-training to get some of our inspectors cross-trained in other inspection areas, and also what I would characterize as promotional opportunities for them to attain these International Code Council certifications. Tom Carino is, it's actually quite an accomplishment to work towards the IEDC, that's the International Economic Development Council, and they have a certification program that requires quite a bit of education. And John Schneider has pursued continuing education through the city's reimbursement program, and with Grants Management, all of the staff have HUD training up into the advanced HUD specialists and all the different granting programs. And recognizing this, we've done some creative work with the budget and some materials we no longer have in hard copy form, so we've been able to take and working with Ron Elgidge, take some of those funds and move them towards that training and education and different educational materials, so we can continue to have those licenses and those certifications. So, that's a small change that you might not have been able to pull out unless I'd been able to talk to you about that tonight. Let's see, in terms of priorities, we'll be looking obviously for the council goals to help guide us. I think we worked very hard on the last set, and I think we had a lot of accomplishments, and we finished a lot of those goals. That's pretty exciting. We're anticipating spending a lot of time in the area of sustainability, and this would be, I think, something that impacts all the divisions in Community Development and Planning. We want to make sure that our zoning codes and subdivision ordinance are up to date and provide for sustainable practices, same with the building codes. We also want to concentrate- We also want to concentrate more and do more downtown. We think we've got a great start. It's been very exciting. We talked a little bit earlier with questions on TIF, and this is a strategic time for us to look at what else we want to accomplish in the downtown and to prioritize those projects. And this is something we would really like to work towards. As you know, we're working on a number of projects at the early stage of, you know, looking at the properties, and earlier tonight, we were over at 901 West University for a building opening last week. We were at Crystalview Townhomes for a groundbreaking, and the lesson from those two events is it takes time. These great projects do take time, because both of these projects had histories that went back some years, but if you stick at it and you keep at it, then they will get built, and people will be served by it. They'll get beautiful new offices, you'll have a beautiful new amenity and the urban landscape and new homes. So that's what we see is that long-term, and we want to continue the success of downtown, particularly in a northerly direction, so north of Main Street. We think we've, that's the idea of looking at the Boneyard, completing the streetscape on Broadway, and working on some of these redevelopment sites. The other priority, and I'd like to talk a little more about TIF and the TIF budget, but the other priority I can see happening this year would be just helping those in need. So this would be something that we will be doing and continuing to do, both in Economic Development. So people in need means our businesses, our local economy, and we have some changes that we're looking at in our redevelopment programs to really help our businesses. One of the things that came out in looking at just some of the accomplishments of the last administration was how many new businesses had opened Interban, and it's like a hundred. I mean, it's very impressive, all the ribbon cuttings, and that's something that we want to make sure that we keep those businesses here, that they can grow and be successful, and also begin to create that critical mass so that we can keep building our retail sales, because that's really what helped the budget this year, that we could have the luxury, if you will, of keeping a same-line budget. And then helping those in need in terms of our Grants Management, and we heard of an issue recently with tenant relocation concerns, and we do have problem properties that we need to continue to work with, and a few, not many, not like other communities, but we do have some properties that are unsettled in terms of the ownership and the bankruptcy. So we need to be able to continue to help those people in our different divisions working together and working with the City of Champaign to help that to happen. Some of the things on TIF, this year, we've worked, we've met more times and spent more time on TIF, the TIF budget than any other year, and it's because there's so many great ideas, and we wanted, you'll recall, we did a proposal on downtown prioritization. We wanted to make sure we had a really good balance of bricks-and-mortar type projects, CIP-type projects like the roads, and business assistance types of projects, the SOF projects, and then also redevelopment, so that we're adding to the increment. So we work very productively, and we think what we have brought forward is a really nice balance to help all the different TIF areas and get some of these programs and projects started, but not just do all the roads and nothing left, or just do all the businesses and not have a nice-looking downtown. We need to have a nice-looking downtown. From Community Development, in terms of the programs, some of the things that we looked at and would like to have happen in tweaking our programs, improving our programs, include in our redevelopment incentive program, our TIF RIP, that's been very successful in our businesses, and we would like to improve that program by providing for a little bit of more flexibility in how those are allocated. So we've had a $60,000 cap, and we're now looking at three different levels so that your assistance would go along with how much of your investment it is. So that's one improvement that we think, rather than batching more than one grant, if you have a larger project, then you would get a larger loan subsidy and grant. So we'll be modifying those program descriptions. We had a very successful program in the Gallery District that rent subsidy, it's not funded, you know, it's not that much money in the scheme of things, but it benefited so many people, and it really made a difference in our downtown. There's a kind of a synergy going on there now. If you've been to the gallery openings and some of the sidewalk sales and some of the events, it's really exciting, and we hear back from businesses at that Gallery District and Santa, the little grant subsidy that we did, short-term, again, not very much money was, made all the difference. So we would like to extend and expand that. And the other thing we're talking about is a new program, very similar based on that, called Small Business Startup Program, and again, working with entrepreneurs. There is a lot going on, and people really are coming to us with great ideas, and they're helping each other, and UBA is a big part of this, Urbana Business Association, so we want to be there and offer the types of things that people are looking for. So those are two changes to our TIF programs. In terms of TIF projects, we would like to conduct a market study of the downtown, like a retail share study, to see what would work here, and how much of it, and how much revenue can be generated. And we think that a well-conducted market study can help us to attract some of these sectors of the economy. So this is something Champaign has done recently, and we think it would help our downtown if we could do that as well. So that's a suggestion. Dennis Roberts, Robert Myers, and Susan Tolson all went to a very invigorating conference earlier this year from the Main Street program, and we would like to do some things that are like Main Street, maybe not necessarily through the program, but as instructed by the program. They have a curriculum, and so we have included a request for a Main Street grant program, working with UBA to implement that in our downtown. And this has everything to do with helping these businesses to succeed and giving them the tools that they need to succeed. So that's another concept. Bill had already mentioned the wayfinding, and that's another way that we can improve our downtown, that people can get to the parking deck and know where to park and know what the image of the downtown is, and this goes along with our parking plan implementation. Then finally, we would like to continue to work with our marketing experts, Royce Wagner. We are making a lot of progress with them. We've been working with the mayor and Dennis Roberts on this project as well, and have some preliminary materials, not yet complete yet, to present to council, but very soon, and we would like to continue to work with them in preparing our materials and just getting that nice, consistent look, professional, consistent look to help with our marketing. And I think that's about all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Any questions or comments for Libby? Brian?
Yeah, Libby, I guess the TIF question that I mentioned about with Bill, about when it's appropriate to begin conversations with the other taxing bodies and our legislators about possible TIF extensions. I think we've all seen great benefits from the TIF. I don't know if it's a little bit too early because we're still a few years off from expiration of any of them. Do we need to be planning soon or planning later to begin the process?
Well, I think we're hoping to really make a bang with the TIF and generate some increment, and that would strengthen our position. I do feel that TIF is very important for a downtown, and we've actually been through one full, TIFs last for 23 years ordinarily. We've been through one whole, that's almost a generation, right? So we've been through one generation of TIF, and our job wasn't done, but we did a lot. If you look at our older streetscape, it just got, 23 years, you know, is a long time, our parking deck, and some of the things we did back when in the 80s have to be redone, have to be revitalized. So now we're maybe a third to half in our second-generation TIF. This is our chance to really make a difference, and I think that will strengthen our position with our partners to continue this as a beneficial tool. So I think we should look to prove it this way by being smart and strategic with our TIFs. I think our third TIF has done its job primarily. There's a little bit more. This is the one on University in North Urbana. If you look at the TIF plan, much of what we hope to do has been accomplished, and that one will be expiring next, and that's probably one that we should allow to expire. So in budgeting that, there are a few sites that had maybe wanted to do development agreements but have been delayed, the Trammell Crowe Project. So maybe what we do instead is do some pre, do some funding there to get the sites prepared, but then probably we need to work with our Joint Review Board and allow that to expire would be my thought. And the TIF IV, I think that one's a little bit lazy starting, and that's something we need to get an engine for TIF IV. That's the one going up Cunningham Avenue. If we can get an engine and get some revenue, then we can make the improvements that were presented in the corridor plan report. In the meanwhile, we have some modest funds shown in there to make some small changes. Curb Cut closures is one that we're funding, we would like to fund, because that can make a big difference, and that's something that is eligible for TIF. As people redevelop, we can ask them to cut the curb or close their curbs, and we can rebuild them. That'll make a better look and better safety. So we have some funding there. We have some other funding for some sign replacements, just some upgrades, and that's, so that's, these are very small things that we can do in TIF IV.
Anything else for Libby? All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Dennis, at the beginning of the meeting, had asked that we have a discussion of fees, so.
Thanks very much, Heather. I did email you, and I think you all got a copy, of a suggestion that I am making, and it's in response to constituents in my ward, businesspeople who are looking at the cost of doing business in relation to the city's fee structure and comparing them to other fee structures that are exist in communities nearby. So if you don't have a copy of that summary, I have some papers here if you want to, I can pass them down. All right, and I got a couple more here, I think. There's another one. All right, and what I'm looking at particularly in this discussion is the city's liquor fees, which we administer and we charge our businesses on an annual basis. And this is the cost of the permission of doing the sale of liquor in our community. It's been pointed out to me that we have a very high fee in comparison to other communities in our area, and the list that was provided to me of 12 cities places the Urbana's licensing fee for Class A liquor license at the highest, being, this was like not the one that's proposed for the coming budget, but the one that we're currently using right now, at $4,462 a year. That's the cost of doing business, and it comes out to, you know, practically about $400 a month for the sale of liquor. Comparatively, Chicago's fees are $62 less, but Champaign's fee, which isn't based exactly in the same basis, you know, precisely, but a business in a Class A license request in Champaign would be paying $1,900. And so that's like a very significant comparison. It's a base fee, and then there's an additional fee, which is added to a liquor license in Champaign that has to do with the occupancy rate of your establishment and whether you are also selling packaged liquor. And I made some details and comparisons in the handout that I gave you and that I emailed to you. And then the fees continue to be less and less by the listing by cities. Evanston, $1,800, Savoy, $1,700, Danville, $1,300, Cankey, $1,200, and it goes down. So in comparison, we're requesting that our businesses support the city's administrative fees and use of liquor fee with a $4,462 annual fee, and we're looking to enlarge it by about $200 for the coming year, and our budget of fees is going to go up this year on an annual increase, just, you know, cost of living basically and cost of administration. Because there's, you know, these are hard economic times, and I think it's very important to support local businesses in our community, and we do not have a lot of bars in our community. We don't have the number of bars and pubs that our neighbor Champaign does. I thought that this, it might be a year to consider freezing or rolling back our fee for certain classifications, which is the highest ones, and so I recommended that we reduce the fees by 10%. This is at least my point of conversation. And if we were to do that, currently, for Class A drink and consumption license for liquor, if we're paying, if we're asking for $4,462, 10% less, we would be collecting $4,015. All right, so that would be about a $446 difference from a current, the current income we get and next year's income. The same amount is charged for Class AA licenses, which affects major hotel and motel consumption licenses, and also I suggested that we also review Class B license, which is a peer retail only, reducing that by about $230. So the amount that we're talking about is not a huge amount, but I feel that because of the huge discrepancies between our communities, we should be aware of this effect and what it might do in the business climate of our town. So I'm making the suggestion that we reconsider our fees and adjust them for a year, and then evaluate what the effect is going to be. But this is a year for many businesses, it's very challenging to make a go of it, and how can we, we say that we promote business in Urbana, and we want to see our downtown businesses thrive. So I'm thinking, well, okay, here's a proposal that has been brought to me by a local business person, just, he's just asking about the question of fairness and parity, and I think that if you run the numbers, you see that there's, even when you add the extraneous fees that are added to business of equal size, we still come out being, charging quite a bit more. Now, I realize that we have a history that's created this divergence, and it's fine. We understand perhaps how we got it, and perhaps we also realize that there's other ways of bringing fees in to pay for certain facilities and amenities and services, but the fact is, if we just honestly look at the fee structure of our city, in some ways we're better, in some ways we're a little worse than the surrounding communities, so wouldn't it be wise to have a conversation to see what's possible to bring our fee structure, you know, into line with business practices in other communities? And so I'm just proposing this to have a thoughtful reduction. It doesn't affect all business liquor licenses, just certain ones. We don't have a large number of businesses that would be affected by them. Ron Eldridge estimated that this would be a change in our income for the coming year of a little over $10,000, if I'm correct. So it's not a large amount when we consider that the city's budget, annual budget, is $43 million. Can we afford to give a $10,000 reduction in fees for one year to try to stimulate businesses in our community? And I wanted to say that in the TIF Increment Financing District, we do have in our budget a line item called Marketing Studies and Incentives, and that line item budget includes $878,000 in discretionary spending. Is there possibly a way to think that in comparison to $878,000, we can afford a $10,000 reduction in the fee for one year to try to stimulate a certain part of our economy in the downtown? So that's my, that's the point of my conversation tonight.
Mayor?
Well, as the Liquor Commissioner, I feel I should respond to your.
And I hope you wouldn't, no.
What was the 878,000?
It's the TIF District's Marketing Studies and Incentives budget item.
Well, that money would have to be spent in a TIF, and I think when you look at Urbana's financial situation, I have to say that Ron Eldridge has done a very good job over the years, and I think one of the things that he's done that's very smart is that we gradually increase our fees with inflation, so then we're not faced with some huge increase. So then we're not faced with some huge increases. And Champagne has seen the wisdom of this. And our sister city is planning to go to the Ron Eldridge method and gradually increase their fees. And I, you could pick out the liquor fees and say that they're higher in Urbana, but we do have, we've had bars move from Champagne to Urbana. So I don't think we have a disincentive. I think we've created a very good business climate. And you have to realize that the revenue structure of the two cities is different. Champagne has much more sales tax than Urbana does. So we have to rely on fees more than Champagne does. But not all our fees are higher. Our parking fees are considerably lower. And I think some of those people that are having problems in Champagne are coming to Urbana. Because last time I was at a gallery, I guess it was IMC, downtown Urbana was really packed with people, people in front of the, the bars, and there were a lot of people there at night. So I think we, we have a balanced budget. We're doing better than any other local government in this area. And I think if you're going to compare just liquor fees, you really need to look at the whole mix of revenues, and then you have to look at what our expenses are. We run a pretty tight ship here. Our employees do not get the same level of wages that Champagne does. But we are fortunate that we had such careful budgeting, that we have a balanced budget, and we are not having to let employees go, which many governments are forced to do. So I, I think, I understand what you're, you know, you have a constituent says they'd like to have their license lowered, but if we lower that license, there'll be a lot of other people that will think that their fees should be lowered as well. And so it could have a bigger effect than $10,000. And $10,000 isn't a huge amount of money, but as I said, we, since we've had bars move from Champagne to Urbana, I don't think there's really evidence that our, our businesses aren't doing well. Are the, the liquor receipts, are they coming in pretty well this year? Ron would answer that question.
Yeah, they, they're actually up considerably. Some, some places are up almost 40% over last year. So the liquor industry is not suffering from the depression. In fact, they're gaining.
Or is it a spiking?
I wonder, you know, I've been thinking about this. I wonder if this problem would be alleviated to some degree if we looked at a graduated liquor license like Champagne has. I mean, we kind of resisted that because it makes it much more complex, and now you're trying to figure out occupancy and different rates, but at least, you know, some of the smaller establishments, I'm sure would have a lower liquor license. Maybe some of the larger ones might have a higher if you tried to make it revenue neutral. But it would be maybe closer to Champagne, and, and, you know, maybe if you're interested, maybe that's something we, we could do in the future to look at.
Brandon?
Yeah, I think it would be interesting to look at that model of Champagne's where you kind of pay by size to see how that would affect, you know, small and large bars in Urbana. The other question I had about this is, if you could describe a bit about where our fee comes from, I know, you know, the plan of all our fees is we charge what it costs us. We recover the cost of administering the program. And $4,000 is a lot, so I'm sure there's a fair amount of staff time, not just, you know, giving them their annual piece of paper, but really more that we're doing, maybe even in police time and enforcement activities, that we're recovering these costs from. But I wondered if you could describe a bit what it is that you do to come to that number and to say, well, okay, there are $4,000 worth of expenditures that we're recouping with the fee.
I've, I've looked at a couple of the cities that have done studies like this, and, and they really vary, just for the exact reason you just mentioned. What, what do you include in a liquor license? If you start including some of the administrative time of the police department and solving those liquor things, then that, then that fee jumps way up, way beyond that. If you just look at just the pure amount of time of shuffling a few papers around, you know, then it's not. So it really depends on how you look at it. One, one thing to note about Champagne, because theirs is on a graduate scale, 1,900 is the base, but that's the smallest number. And there are, there are a number of bars in Champagne that with their 10% increase this coming year will be almost $3,900. So, much closer to ours. And I know they, their staff is recommending that they increase those 10% every year and for the next three or four years until they get caught up. So it's not going to take them too long for that $3,800 to get, to get caught up to our maximum amount. That's the reason why I was wondering if the graduate scale might be a fairer and something to look at. But we've done nothing with our liquor license fees since I've been with the city, except to increase them by inflation costs. So we have never jumped them up more than inflation costs and cost of the services all these years. It's just that I don't know about these other cities, and, and I don't even know about the rates of the other cities. It could be very confusing to look at liquor licenses and try to figure out exactly what everybody's paying in the various classes, because there are all kinds of weird charges, one-time fees and, and base amounts that come through. But I know for, for many years, Champagne just simply did not increase theirs at all, period. They were just chose to underwrite that through their property tax or their sales tax or other revenues.
Dennis?
So I thought that was sort of interesting that you just said that, that some of the larger liquor sales businesses in Champagne, after the base fee and based on the occupancy, would almost equal $3,900 or, yeah, $3,900, which you're talking now, and that's an interesting conversation, because you're comparing some of the larger, the largest liquor establishment by sales in Champagne to a flat fee for all bars, like you're talking, you're talking about the Rose Bowl, you're talking about the Aaron Post, you're talking about, you know, the new pub, the, you know, the Black Dog, I can't remember what its name is, on Broadway Street. These are much smaller establishments with lots smaller occupancy levels, but they're basically, you're basically saying that it's fair to charge them the same amount as like a really large, you know, club in Champagne. And that's why I'm talking, I bring this up, that's a fairness and parity question. And your, your suggestion of graduating the fees is probably the most palatable way, perhaps, to look at it, and it sounds fair, because, I mean, graduated taxes are more fair than a flat tax. So I appreciate your comments. You know, what I was going to suggest is that today, we, today, this year, in this budget, we could actually try to address something and perhaps gain a little bit of, you know, positive response from our business community, because we can show that we actually care about the business prospects of our community.
Charlie?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to see us move to some, something that takes into account the size of the facilities. What's bothered me, and I, I, when we looked at this a couple of years ago, I went and did my own analysis around the state, and they're not as bad as the numbers. If you started figuring in, figuring in the, the side charges and whatnot, they're, they're not as low as given in the table here. And I can dig, dig up my numbers and try to revise them. But we are still one of the most expensive, if not the most expensive, in the state, you know, comparable to Chicago. And maybe Chicago's kept its, its numbers up with inflation, as have we. And I don't know if this, the number that's in the table here is last year's number or this year's number. You know, these things sort of leapfrog around. So maybe that just Champagne, just Urbana and Chicago have kept up with inflation, and nobody else has, has bothered. But, but I'm trying to remember, I'm trying to remember if Chicago had a flat fee, or whether they, they have, they have multiple levels there or not. Do you recall, it was in that table of mine from a couple of years ago? Okay, I'll look it up again. But I, I think that the fairest thing we can do is probably take into account the size of the bars. And, and maybe this year, rather than try to, we might not be able to get it all figured out this year, and maybe something we have to introduce next year, but I would support not necessarily a 10% decrease, but maybe simply not raising our liquor license fee this year to inflation, just keep it at, at last year's level, which will have some, some budgeting effect, but not, not as much. And that in the next year, we figure out a more equitable, commit to figuring out a more equitable way of assessing the liquor license fee, because clearly a small bar and a big bar, you know, the Cannibal Club versus, what's our smallest bar in town? I'm not sure. Yeah, the Cannibal, or Cannibal Club is, and Crane Alley are big. Some of them are restaurants, though, and that makes it confusing. So we probably just need to go through and analyze this. It's clearly not something we can get done by July 1. So, so I'd like to see us move some, move in some direction, but at the same time, maybe just freeze the fees for this year and, and see what Urbana and other communities come up with in terms of catching up with us.
I, I just have one, one more comment to make about it, too. When you think about the fairness and all that, and the ability of a, of a business to make, to make money on their license, just by, you know, untrained observation, if you are looking at the amount of people who are filling the bars and the liquor, liquor licensed businesses in Urbana, and on the same night, if you're going to go to Champagne and look at how many people are standing around and sitting outside of the liquor establishments in Champagne, you're going to get an impression that probably the larger amount of, like, say, student drinkers, which is like a huge amount, are in the Champagne area. And so the ability for a business to make money on their license is, is determined by their, the number of customers that come in every night for their, for their building. And I'm suggesting that we might be able to, I mean, I'm, I'm just observing that probably if you have a high business license in Champagne, you're probably able to, to pay it fairly, fairly well and make your money, you know, in a couple of weeks or something to help pay for that month's, that month's portion. It may take longer for those people that may be like, not as a dense population clientele in our town. So we're, you know, we're not, we, there's a lot of aspects to how this thing works and, and what makes it fair to business. And I'm just saying that, you know, if we look at this and we try to stimulate our downtown and really tell our businesses that we care about them and their future and their prosperity, I'm not saying we should make treats for everybody, but I'm just saying that if you hear a wheel squeak, it's time to look at whether it needs greasing or not, and that's what's happened here. So your comment, perhaps that maybe not to change them, but to freeze them, at least, I think shows good faith on the part of the city.
Mayor?
Well, I think it's important to stress that these are businesses that have had a 40% increase.
Some, not all.
Is that, that's overall?
Some of them have.
Okay. Overall, a 40% increase. So, I mean, that's, that's a business that's doing pretty well as a whole. So I don't know if you want to tax the ones that are doing well and subsidize the ones that aren't doing well. I mean, we might be getting into what Heather calls the nanny state here. But anyway, I, I think they're, they're doing well, and I think it's, you know, certainly no harm to look at it, but there's something to be said for simplicity also. And there's also something to be said for the fact that Champagne feels that they need to become more like Urbana when it comes to liquor licenses.
Any other? Diane?
This, this touches on sort of a larger issue that I was, I've been wondering about, and that is, is there a systematic or regular assessment of the business climate in Urbana? I mean, at, at some point, does anyone ever just talk directly to the business community and say, what's working well, what's not? Do you have roundtables? Do you survey? I mean, I just don't know what, what Urbana does.
Could I answer that? Yeah, I would like to say, and Tom's here, we do have meetings with all the business areas on a regular basis. Tom?
We do a number of things. We do have neighborhood business groups that are, we've divided the city up into neighborhood business groups, and we will meet with those businesses. We, we have one about every quarter, and we rotate around the city. We also have retention visits with specific businesses where people from the Economic Development Team here at the city, or the city along with the Economic Development Corporation of Champagne County, will visit businesses and ask a series of questions on a, a form, and then kind of go along with the conversation to, to get information from them on what they think the business climate is like, what legislation at the local, state or federal level is impacting them, that type of thing. And then we also periodically, and by that I mean every few years, do a, a business survey where we send informa, or we send a survey out to business owners, business managers, and ask them for feedback on the business climate. That survey was last conducted a few years ago and probably needs to be done upcoming here in the future. And we do have plans to do that in the upcoming fiscal year. So there's a, a number of things we do at different levels.
Also, the UBA has their roundtables, so there, there are definitely arenas that.
So the survey will be done in 2009, this year, 2009?
The, the last survey was administered by Ryan Bro when he was new with the city, and it is, it's something that I've discussed with him as something we want to revisit this upcoming fiscal year. The plan is for the '09, '10 fiscal year, but I don't have solid dates for you, but we are, we are definitely interested. With, with the evolving economy, we felt it was time to administer that again, and so we will.
Do you get a specific, is asking about fee structure or that sort of thing?
I, what I, maybe I'll do is I'll get an electronic copy of the last business survey, which was done a few years ago, and maybe route that around for your benefit. But yes, there are questions about what do you feel are obstacles to you in doing your, in conducting your business in Urbana? Talk about fee structures, that kind of thing. So yes, those are questions that are asked.
Charlie?
Since, since Tony's sitting here, he might have the, the number off the top of his head. Sorry, Tony, do we have occupancy numbers on the bars?
Yep.
Okay, so you could generate a quick table of that for Ron. And, oh, it's already done? Okay, okay. I guess, I guess, do you off the top of your head know what the, what the range of numbers is?
I think produce it in just a few minutes.
Oh, really?
I'll go upstairs and get it.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that'd be, be handed have. I'd like to revisit this, because what I'd like to do is, is, is straw poll sort of thing to, you know, if, if we do have a big enough difference in those, it may be worthwhile to, I'd like to know if, if people would support going to graduated system. If there's not a huge difference in those numbers, then a flat fee is simpler. But, you know, if you have a bar with 300 and a bar with 50, then, then it probably is worth looking at graduated. So, so when Tony comes back with the numbers, then I, I'll make a, a sort of a straw poll motion directing staff to pursue this or not. But in the meantime, probably ought to move on to something else in the budget here, and then come back to that.
David, did you have a comment?
Well, actually, I was trying to just say that I agreed with, with Charlie, but then he changed what he said, so I agree with what Charlie says now, that, that, let's take a look if we can get the actual numbers on, on the size of these, and if, if there really is a, a big difference in scale, then I, I think that we'll be able to see that and, and suggest that if a two-tiered system or something like that, rather than a gradation of 13 different slices or something like that. But until we have the numbers, you know, it, it might be better to go on to something else.
Okay. Is there anything?
Just thank you for all your consideration to listen to this.
I appreciate it.
Okay. Well, then we'll move on and wait for Tony to come back with those numbers, and when he does, maybe before we adjourn, we could maybe have a straw poll, poll motion from Charlie. Number six is the social service allocations, and we have Kelly and David.
Charlie, would you like to start?
Okay. Well, let me start out by saying that I've, I've given you, about a week ago, I distributed a spreadsheet showing the, the various allocations that everyone had suggested, and also a, sort of took each of them, you know, each of the seven ward suggestions and averaged them out and jiggled the numbers a little bit so that they added up to our, the, the amount that we have to allocate. And then, having done that, having distributed, the next thing I did was I fleed the scene of the crime, and so I wasn't here on Monday to actually talk about it. And what I'd like to do is really just get some, some directions on, on how to proceed with this. Should we discuss the, the numbers as, as we have them, or how do we go from here? The numbers that everyone has except for the mayor, or?
I was.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. What, what's the best way, I, I wasn't here last year to do this dance, and I find this year I'm leading it, so I'm, I'm asking, can someone please tell me the steps?
And we forgot to tell you one of the criteria, which I think Brandon's already informed you about, of, which was that, you know, usually we look for a majority support for each item as opposed to averaging flat regardless of the number of supporters. There are a couple of these that we haven't funded in the past for, for reasons, and so that, that does jiggle the numbers a little bit, in my view, and I, and it's a complication that I'm not sure how to, how to address.
Okay, so the solution is to simply average Robert's allocations, and, and, okay, and go from there. Okay. So what, what I can do with this in mind is that, yes, there are some cases where only three out of the seven council members wanted to allocate money to one or, one or two of these slots. What I can do is go back with and, and check for those and come up with a, a new round of numbers that I can present to everyone, including even possibly the mayor next time around, and we can discuss this further a week from now. Before I, before I start playing spreadsheet jockey again, let me say that if you've got any other specific suggestions, Brandon has already emailed me with some, mostly trying to, again, get, get me up to speed on how, how this process works. If, if there are any other comments you'd like to make on the allocation as I presented it, please let me know, please.
Charlie?
We'd like to thank you for taking this on, and, because it's not an easy task. So that, that we've overlooked giving you a bit of information is our fault, not yours. So any help you want from us, just ask.
Well, as the character in Monty Python says, "It's a fair cop, but I blame society."
Kelly, when, when are you looking for numbers from us by?
Well, in comparison to last year, it really wasn't until mid-June with the budget, you know, so, but, so we're, we're ahead.
We're ahead, okay.
Which is, is fine, as well, I mean, but so...
I know that Dennis is going to be gone for the next three?
Three sessions, yeah.
Okay. Are you gonna, are you going to be calling in any of those, or?
I don't think so, up to far.
Okay, okay.
But I didn't, I didn't have any real adjustments, and I read Brandon's, and I thought they were reasonable.
Okay.
So I could support them.
Okay, well, I guess you go back to playing spreadsheet jockey and with the new information of the majority of the numbers and going from there, and you can bring something back to us next week.
Okay, well, actually, I hope to distribute it by the middle of this, this week.
Okay.
Give you a chance to see it, give everybody a chance to see it, and then we can, if, if there's no, no further need for changes on Monday, or next Monday, then I think we can just go ahead and move on.
Okay. Mayor, did you have Tuesday? Or Friday? Let's say Friday.
Something close to the middle of this week.
All right. Is there anything else from Kelly, or, okay, well, then we'll move on. Resolution number 2009-05-021R, a resolution ascertaining prevailing wage 2009, 2010 finance, so we'll have Ron.
This, I'm, I'm going to have to ask if we can defer this till the next committee meeting. I went, I put on the agenda thinking that the Illinois Department of Labor would have their wage rates, and when I last checked their website, they had a note saying they were, they were delayed, they didn't say why, but they checked back the first week of June, so we can't really adopt something if we don't have their rates.
Okay, so we'll postpone this until two weeks? The first or the eighth?
Well, in the, I guess we could take it directly to a council meeting. The pass has always gone through committee and then the council, so I, I guess that's up to your choice.
So the eighth would be our next committee. Mayor?
We don't really have a choice on this, right?
Well, we, we can't adopt them till they give us the rates.
No, but I'm saying we don't need to discuss it in a committee and then at the council, because we either adopt it or, or we don't, right? We can't change the numbers.
You're right.
We can't not have adopted, so...
We really don't, we really don't even have a choice of adopting it, to be honest with you.
I would just, I would move to have this at council next week if it's available.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Ron. Ordinance number 2009-05-056, an ordinance requiring payment of a sanitary sewer service lateral connection fee relating to certain parcels, North Shore Drive, Bill Gray.
Thank you. I'm providing a slight updated ordinance for your information. The project I mentioned briefly earlier tonight, the North Shore Drive sanitary sewer extension project, will be underway later this summer. The primary project is a new public sanitary sewer to serve the businesses on North Shore Drive. We're also going to be putting new curb and gutter and, and doing a major street resurfacing project for this block. In order to not have to dig up the street again at some future date, we're going to be extending a portion of the private property sanitary sewer lateral to the property line. Per city ordinance, the connection point of a public sewer of a lateral to a business or to a home is the responsibility of that property owner. What we are suggesting to do is we, the city, would front the money to extend these service lines to the property line and identify and mark them accordingly, and if and when these businesses want to abandon their private sewer septic system, in some cases, there's, I think, an owner or two that want to do that right away, then they would pay us for our portion of that sewer lateral we're installing at the time of the construction. An efficient way or mechanism to recapture that money is, what's this ordinance before you tonight? And basically, let's say, fee, which we're estimating to be at $4,000, $600, and this would be paid in year one, and in subsequent years, we would charge a 4% annual rate, and hence, the reason for the handout of this ordinance is we added the word "annual" to what would be section five, that sentence there, it says at 4% annual, annually. And I appreciate Councilman Baursock's screen, that's my attention. We would also record an ordinance with each property once the, assuming the council approves this ordinance, and we would do that also at this time. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. We did bring this to their attention. We had a pre-construction meeting, several of the businesses were at the meeting that we held at the Eastern Illinois Food Bank Conference Room, and they're aware that this action would be presented to you.
Any questions for Bill? Charlie?
I know that several of the people up there have wanted this work done for some time, the, the roadwork and so on, and so I assume they're supportive, even though they're going to have to pay for some share here, right?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I, I would move to send this to council with a recommendation for approval. I second that.
It's been moved by Charlie, seconded by David. Is there any more discussion? Diane?
Just one question, is the $4,600 the total cost to the businesses that, or they, will they have to pay extra to disconnect, connect in this septic tank to the public health system?
Yeah, this is just a portion of their cost, and you are correct, they would have to disconnect and properly deactivate or, or fill in a septic tank, they would be, and reroute their piping to where it exits the building to connect to where we stub it out to the property line. So that would be additional costs on top of the $4,600.
So like, for the food bank, how much are they looking at total, do you think?
Now, without knowing where they exit the building, it's just hard to say. I mean, if we had that information, we could do a ballpark estimate, but...
Are there any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. The last item I have is a motion approving the public arts program plan. Anne is here tonight.
Just need to set up our PowerPoint presentation. What's that? Oh, it's been a while. Okay, well, hopefully, the, your screens will awake.
They're, we have them here.
You do have them? Okay, good.
I don't have mine.
The ladies over here have them alive. We've got powers.
Can we kick? We have a technician hard at work. At the subterranean levels of that, of this room.
An invisible technician.
If you find any original bricks from the original city building, would you please let us know?
Well, I can begin by introducing myself, and most of you have met me. I'm Anna Hochalter, the Public Arts Coordinator in Economic Development, and thank you for the chance to present our annual public arts program plan to you. This is actually the first annual public arts program plan to be presented to the city council. Last month, we presented a status report which had a program of work for the current fiscal year, and now this is the plan which outlines program of work and additional resources and scheduling for the upcoming fiscal year 2009, 2010. We bring this to you as is identified in the ordinance which established the public arts program in 2008. So we are, can you see your screens now?
I can look over here.
Yes, no? Okay. Okay. Well, we're celebrating our first year of being a formal public arts program. We're, we've joined, oh, we've joined 34 other Illinois communities with arts programming or arts commissions. During the course of this year, we were designated as an Illinois arts-friendly community by the Illinois Arts Council and the Illinois Municipal League, and that's quite an achievement, and that we will seek that designation again this year. We were able to provide a free art workshop to 300 participants, this was our mask-making workshop at Market at the Square last October, and just over the last month, we received 70 Urbana Arts Grant applications. So since you saw me last month, we launched the Arts Grant Program, received 70 application, 73 applications, and have worked now with one jury on selection, and we're working with another, another jury on selection, they're meeting tomorrow. So we'll be finalizing those awards through the Public Arts Commission from the budget that was allocated last year, uh, excuse me, this current fiscal year. And we've received significant committed donations from partners, and I'll touch on that on, upcoming. I just wanted to point out the, the photo, two things. The Chinese Goose Bridge, which you should have all received an invitation to, we're dedicating the plaque this coming Saturday, May 30th, at 1:00 p.m. on Broadway Avenue, and also the slot, the photo next to that is all of the 70 applications, which was quite a task to sort through.
Yay, goose!
Yay, goose! Oh, now I've lost my, uh-oh. Oops. No, there, okay. So I want to point out that several of the programs which have been initiated in the fiscal year 2008, 2009 are still in, in progress, including the Philo Road Public Art Project, the Iron Post Sculpture, and the Unique Places Plaque and Markers Program. The Philo Road and Iron Post both had budget, budget allocations assigned to them in the current fiscal year, and staff will be continuing to implement those projects as well as pursue the Unique Places Plaque, Unique Places Plaque and Marker Program, which we'll be bringing to you at a future date. There wasn't a, there isn't a budget item associated with the Unique Places Plaque and Markers Program at this time, so that will be upcoming. But I wanted to just clarify that the program plan which you're viewing has made a distinction between some of the administrative projects that were initiated in the last year and will be continued, but without additional budget concerns. So in this, in this upcoming fiscal year, we're prepared to continue the success of the program by encouraging economic growth and further vitalizing the city through our programs, increasing the quality of life. The focus will be to implement, evaluate, and improve the programs. So many of the programs in our plan this year have been initiated in the current year and will be continued in the upcoming fiscal year, and we will also be fostering partnerships and pursuing grant writing and additional fundraising. So the mission of our public arts program is to create a city where artists thrive and are valued, and where all residents engage with the arts in its many forms. And when we say the arts, we mean not only visual art, but we mean music and dance and theater and creative writing, so it's very inclusive. And I need to recognize Robert Lewis, who is on city council and also serving on our Public Arts Commission. We greatly appreciate his time on our commission, and I can mention, we have eight, we have seven other commissioners. Robin Hall is the chair. We have Jeff Bant, Barbara Hedlund, Catherine Lamb, Michelle Plant, Sarah Ross, and Pat Salmon, who also serve on our Public Arts Commission, and we've been meeting monthly for a number of months now, and they're really a super group. They volunteer a lot of their time for additional subcommittee meetings, and they, they're willing to do research on their own and also meet with me to finalize more program planning. So we will be pursuing the program of work, program of work and the annual program plan through staff time and Public Arts Commission subcommittees. We have a subcommittee that, for almost all of our programs, and that's really helpful. We will also be fostering additional partnerships, looking at current and new marketing opportunities, and marketing not only for our program, but also as a means of marketing the city as a whole. Public art and the arts are major attractions when you're looking at creating a vibrant city and for visitors as well as residents, so we'll look into those additional pursuits. And then we have our program of work, which I'll cover in just a little bit. These photos are from the Boneyard Arts Festival in this, the, the last Boneyard Arts Festival in April. So I need to mention our partners. Currently, we've received, we've seen, we've seen significant donations from the Urbana Business Association through their Business Backs the Arts Initiative. We work with 40 North, 88 West as our Champaign County Cult, Arts, Culture and Entertainment Council. We have collaborations with the Urbana Blues Brews and Barbecue Festival. They've dedicated the revenue from their Arts and Crafts Boulevard, which will be happening June 26th and 7th this year, to the public arts programs. That's significant. Again, want to mention and thank the efforts of Mayor Pressing and Dennis Roberts for the 175th birthday fundraising that... 175th birthday fundraising that occurred. We've, we've collected those donations and they're, and you'll see them in the, in the budget that's listed in the program plan. I need to mention that the University of Illinois College of Fine and Applied Arts donated the printing of all of our really beautiful flyers for the grant program, and they were pasted throughout town, and I think that was, it was, it was a significant donation, and it also really helped in marketing the, the grant program. To have a month of application period and receive seventy grants is pretty surprising, so we thank them. And the memberships, the Illinois Arts Alliance, the Americans for the Arts, and the International Sculpture Center, we are all members of, and they, those organizations have been significant in helping the city gather research on best practices for a variety of programming, and also to provide networking and training opportunities and other resources. Okay, so I will try, since I know that it's late, I will try to go very quickly through the program work plan. We have the Public Arts Grant Program, which will be evaluating in the upcoming months and launching a next cycle in the next fiscal year. We have the City Building Art Exhibit Space. The, there is a small additional expenditure here for additional lighting, once we pursue the installation of the infrastructure that was budgeted last, in the current fiscal year. We will pursue arts at the market programming, and in fact, we have an upcoming art, we have a ceramics workshop also this Saturday, May 30th, from 8:00 AM until noon. It's free and open to the public, and we're going to be pursuing art workshops that explore the theme of water and thinking about how we relate to water in our lives and depicting images of water through the arts. So, you can look for that. We have our storefront arts series and Urbana Space Program. There isn't an additional expenditure. In the current year, two thousand dollars were budgeted, and we will be using that allocation as we continue to develop the guidelines and the program. Rhythm of Urbana is a new program, working with the Urbana Public Television Station to do interviews and programs that feature local artists on UPTV. We are pursuing an arts lecture series, providing opportunities for artists and non-artists to engage in dialogue with professionals in the arts. And we have an expenditure to support the cost of bringing in guest speakers. The Downtown Newspaper Rack project is a project that we continue to pursue, and we will bring more information to you at the, at an upcoming meeting. The Martin Luther King Junior Project Planning Committee is a group of commissioners who are also working with various other organizations in the community to evaluate and plan for a piece of public art that honors the life of Martin Luther King Jr. So, funding will be determined also at a later date on that. This is another, the Boneyard Arts, the Boneyard Creek Master Plan, public art planning, is another planning project that will be exploring in coordination with the city's efforts in the Boneyard Creek Master Plan, will be exploring any possibilities for public art along that corridor. And we had a priority planning session with our Public Arts Commission, and they identified some projects that they are interested in pursuing, further research is necessary, so we wanted to list them as potentials which would come to you before any funding allocations were made. And so, that concludes our program of work. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is there any questions for Anna or Tom?
Yeah, I mostly wanted to thank you guys. I know I asked a bunch of questions by email that I got answers to. I'm especially happy that the Philo Road and the Iron Post and the Placks and Marker stuff is all still happening too, and I understand now that that's, that's kind of staff-driven, whereas this is commission-driven. The one thing that I wanted to just make sure I understood is that with funds, some of these things, like Philo Road art, were budgeted in prior, prior fiscal years, but those funds are still available to you, like they're, they're not lost just because we didn't get them spent by June 30th or something, that you have the ability to still continue with Philo Road and those projects.
Mayor? Yeah, this fund was set up to be a continuing fund, so it's isolated from the general fund.
That's cool. Okay, very good.
I mean, appropriations have to be done every year, but the money does not disappear.
It isn't gone. That's great. And I think the grants, the grants are very exciting to me, seeing that with small amounts of funding, we can make lots of little art happen all over town. Events and installations, I think, will add up to something very big, so I support it, and thank you guys for your time on it.
Thank you. Mayor?
Yeah, I think you've put together a really nice program. I do have a little confusion here because there's two exhibit As, and in the second exhibit A, there's just one little typo. It refers to Juma's Hotel, so you might want to change that to Historic Lincoln. It's on page four, under establish a community performance venue.
Anna, you haven't been around here that long, have you?
But it might have been that way. I don't know if it was that way.
It's part of a compilation of the city Urbana arts-related goals, and so we were pulling them. That's probably from the downtown strategic plan.
Yeah, okay.
Any other comments or questions? Go ahead, Diane.
I too think this is a great plan. I have serious reservations, as you know, about the newspaper rack, but overall, it's a great plan. I did want to make one comment on your Urbana arts-related goals where you, where the commission said establish a community performance venue. I would urge people not to forget about the Cobb Auditorium at Urbana High School, particularly after it's renovated, hopefully, in the next few years. It will be a terrific, state-of-the-art performance space, and I think it would be great for the community and school district to consider some joint, joint use of that space and, to maximize use of that space. Some community groups already use it, a number of them do, but we shouldn't forget about that resource right in the heart of our city.
Well, I would entertain a motion because on our agenda is asking for a motion, so go ahead, David.
I move that we approve the public arts program for fiscal year 2009 through 2010. Is it, you looking for a motion to approve or to send it to council?
It says a motion approving the public arts program plan, but we're in committee, so it would need to be sent.
Okay. Well, then I move that we move the public arts program plan to council with a recommendation to approve.
It's been motioned by David, seconded by Charlie. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. There being, Charlie? Oh, we...
I've got the numbers here, yeah. We have fourteen bars. The range, well, we have, we have small, medium, and extra, extra-large, and the big gap in between. I'll send you the spreadsheet, but we've got the Embassy, which is closed at 90, all the way to the Office at 296, which is also closed, so we, the smallest, and the second, you know, we have two that are closed currently.
Nice, you really...
Yeah, and then we have the extra, extra-large being the Canopy Club, which has, you know, has sort of two venues in there, so they've got the bar space, and then they've got the performance area, so I'm not sure how you count that as bar versus other. So, well, anyway, with the Canopy, Canopy Club in there, the average is 222. If you take the Canopy Club out, the average is 182. The median is 173. So, you know, there is a, there is a range here from, from, like I said, we have, we have sort of three sizes, small, medium, and the Canopy Club in a separate category. Yeah, extra-large. So, it probably is worth our looking at whether we do a, you know, a two-tier or three, maybe a three-tier system, or maybe we have some multiple tiers, you know, from, from zero to 150, 150 to 300, you know, something like that, or we go through something more similar to what, to what Champaign does. The smallest number's 90 for the Embassy. I'll send, I'll send the spreadsheet around because I've got them all labeled, and I just need to add a few more labels. So, you know, I would, I would move to send a request to staff to take, to flesh this out and look at a couple of different graduated systems to be presented to us in time for doing something next year. And, and try to think how to work in the, and I would also recommend that between now and July 1st, that we look at freezing this year's, like, freezing liquor licenses at last year's rate, not increasing them for the coming year.
I like that so much that I'll second it.
It's been motioned by Charlie and seconded by Dennis, and can you get wording to staff?
Yeah, yeah, and I'll, I'll send the spreadsheet around to everybody, and that'll be the starting point.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. There being no further business, this meeting stands adjourned.